Given we're having to deal with COVID and social distancing issues, we have some special rules for access to meeting, and I'm going to ask our attorney to review those, please.
Okay, just for the record, individuals will be able to attend this public meeting in person, but you are restricted to only 25 persons within the chamber at any one time. That includes staff. All in attendance are encouraged to wear face mask coverings and social distance. Those who are unable or uncomfortable attending this meeting in person can call in at 336-477-3828 on the day of the meeting to listen to the meeting at any point from 5:45 PM until the end of the meeting. To give citizens the capacity to speak during the public comments section of the meeting or at the special public hearing section of the meetings. Without being physically present, people could have pre-registered by sending an email with your full name, telephone number, and topic no later than 12 noon today to the clerk of the board at davycountyenc.gov. Speaker's name would be announced at the appropriate time, and I'll announce those that have signed up tonight at the appropriate time, and it's when your time to speak. People who wish to have a pre-recorded message to be played during the public comment section have that option of calling in and recording their name, topic, and message no later than 12 noon today also. And those would be then played at the public comments section of the meeting or at the public hearing portion of the meeting, whichever the case may be. If we've got people that are outside in the hallways that need to come in, we would ask that after you speak to let that person come in and you stand outside during that time period so that we do the 25 people per meeting at this point in time. We will not be wiping down chairs, so if you give up your chair and someone else comes, we're not going to stop the meeting and wipe down each individual chair each time, so you're sitting at your own risk from that standpoint. And also, with that said, the only other thing that I would say, and I could wait and do it at the public comment period, but I'll go ahead and do it now since I'm talking, is that those people who signed up at the sign-up sheet tonight to do a public comment, those are limited to three minutes as far as what you say. If you're speaking about something that's coming up for a public hearing later in the meeting, you can, instead of speaking at the public comment time, you could speak at the public hearing time, and you're not limited to three minutes at that point in time like you are under the public comments section. You can always speak at the public comments section for your three minutes, and you can come back up and speak at the public hearing if you wish to. But if you're speaking about the same thing, you might want to wait and do that at the public hearing section of the meeting instead of the public comments section. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vogler, and strange times, and we appreciate you working with the constraints that we're forced to be under. At this time, I will call the regularly scheduled meeting of September 8, 2020, of the Davie County Commissioners to order, and I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us into invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we come here tonight. Father, blessed, a blessed people. Father, you've placed us in a free land, and we thank you for that, Father. We thank you for the freedom to speak. We thank you for the freedom to move, to own property, Father. And, Lord, we thank you for those men and women that serve tonight on battlefields across the world that we might be free. We thank you for men and women who serve in our law enforcement, our EMS, our fire departments, Father, that our homes and our streets and this wonderful community you've placed us in might be safe. We thank you for our educators and our public school system, our private schools, our home schools, Father, where our children are being educated. We thank you for the faithfulness and commitment of those that are educating them. So, Lord, tonight, we lift up a special prayer for healing in our land. Father, we pray for spiritual healing, but, Father, we also pray for physical healing, Lord. And, Father, we pray that you give us strength and perseverance and endurance to carry through this. Father, we pray tonight, I pray especially for wisdom for this board. Father, give us wisdom, discernment, boldness, and courage to carry out the mission that you have given us. And, Father, we will praise you and thank you and give you the honor and glory that you deserve. In Christ's name, amen.
If we could all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as part of our meeting protocols, we have the Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and the Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda, which you come tonight before the board for a vote at this evening's meeting. If so, please speak up and let the board know this before the agenda is actually adopted. Seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member with respect to any matter that's on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion and second. All in favor, the agenda is approved, 5-0. Next, we move to public comment period. All right, so tonight, we have three public hearings. The first one is the Schedule of Values to be adopted as presented by the Tax Office, so I would ask Brian Myers to step in and make that presentation.
He's on his way, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would like to thank you for this. I'll be back before you tonight. As you all know, that last month that we, that I submitted the Schedule of Values to the Board of Commissioners, and they were for public viewing, they were placed on the website and also in the Tax Office. And upon receipt of those proposed schedule standards and rules, I was by statute to publish a statement in the newspaper stating the standards and rules had been submitted and to announce the public hearing date of which y'all set last month for tonight. That ad ran in the newspaper, 8/6, 8/13, 8/20, and 8/27, advertising the public hearing, which you have a copy of in your agenda packet before you. Tonight, I stand before you, according to statute, we must hold a public hearing at least seven days before adopting the final schedule, standards, and rules, and that is tonight, September 8. No action will be needed by the board tonight at the public hearing per statute. So I'll place it back in your hands, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so this is a public hearing, so I will turn it over to Mr. Vogler.
The Chair has announced that this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 105 and Chapter 153A of the North Carolina General Statutes. This board is conducting a public hearing on the schedule, standards, and rules for the appraisal of real property in Davie County that will be effective January 1, 2021. Do you notice that this public hearing was advertised and ran in a local newspaper with general circulation in the county as required by law on August 6, 13, 20, and 27 of this year, as noted in the notice of public hearing included in your agenda packet? I would ask for all who wish to comment at this public hearing on the schedule, standard, and rules for the appraisal of real property in Davie County, North Carolina, to come to the podium, state your full name, and then comment on the proposals. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward to comment, I would turn this public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourself anything that you wish to with regards to tonight. However, as Mr. Myers has already said, this will be back on the agenda next month for a motion and a second and a vote.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Does anyone on the board have any comments or questions for Mr. Myers?
Okay, seeing none, we will look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.
All right, the next public hearing we have is a CDBG grant for the coronavirus, and I'll call him Ms. West.
Good evening. The CARES Act has made available $27.5 million through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for some Community Development Block Grant funds available for the coronavirus. The North Carolina CDBGCV program is designed to help the county to prepare, prevent, and respond to the health and economic impacts of COVID-19. The activities must be most critical to the county and primarily for low and moderate income residents. So, beginning on September the 1st, the North Carolina Rural Economic Development Division began awarding these grant funds on a first-come, first-served basis. So then Davie County intends to make application for these funds. This is going to be the first of two public hearings for the Community Development Block Grant. Tonight, what we are seeking is public input on our intention to apply, and then after the public hearing, we are asking the board to approve the citizen participation plan that begins on page 16 of your agenda packet. The maximum grant award is $900,000 per grantee, so we can, you know, apply for up to that amount, and there's no minimum. We set aside 10% of the awarded grant for administration and pre-award and planning funds. The state has already established the following funding priorities by eligibility, but it's important to note that this is not an all-inclusive list. There might be additional things that we might be eligible to apply for, and just because I'm mentioning tonight doesn't mean that the county may apply for these things. We could seek to receive payments to prevent evictions and utility disconnections for services and enhancing internet access that supports increased connectivity to schools, jobs, and healthcare, and also provide financial assistance to businesses with 100 or fewer employees. Since these grant funds are first-come, first-served, we are going to work with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council to apply. PTRC will be the grant administrator. We plan to have the second public hearing at the next October the 5th Board of Commissioners meeting, and at that time, we'll have more details about exactly what the county intends to apply for. So, citizens will be involved in all stages of the CDBG program through three general mechanisms: to serve as an advisory committee, and also to attend or hold public hearings or community meetings, as well as to provide individual citizen efforts in the form of comments, complaints, or inquiries submitted to the program administrator or to the county. If we are chosen to be awarded, recipients of the CDBGCV funds are required to comply with the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, as well as fair housing and nondiscrimination laws and regulations. All contracting will follow the Davie County Purchasing Policy Section 6, purchasing procedures with state and federal funds, and that section is subject to uniform guidance.
All right, again, this is a public hearing, so I will again turn it over to Mr. Vogler.
The Chair has announced this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A. This board is conducting a public hearing on the proposed application for a Community Development Block Grant coronavirus funding for the benefit of Davie County to prepare, prevent, or respond to the health and economic impact of COVID-19 on the county of Davie, its citizens, and the businesses. Do you notice that this public hearing was advertised, ran in a local newspaper with general circulation in the county as required by law on September 3, 2020, as noted in the notice of public hearing included in your agenda packet? I would ask that all who wish to comment at this public hearing come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then make any comments. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn this public hearing back over to you as Chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing and provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to the citizens' participation plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vogler. At this time, declare the public hearing closed. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Ms. West?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the citizen participation plan.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of moving forward with the citizen participation plan for the CDBG grant, raise your hand. That carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, the third public hearing we have is the Perrin Dell Solar Project, and I will ask Mr. Meadwell to come and present that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight, you have zoning map amendment 2020-02. This is a request by Perrin Dell Holdings LLC to rezone approximately 50 acres of a 56.6-acre parcel from residential agricultural quality design overlay to the SP Special Purpose Special Conditions zoning district. The subject property is located adjacent to 305 Pudding Ridge Road and further described as Davie County Tax Parcel E510. Included in your agenda package, you see a zoning map of the piece of property which identifies the area as predominantly residential agricultural. Also in your package is an aerial photograph which does show that the current use of the property is in an agricultural-type use. The subject piece of property is identified in our updated comprehensive land use plan as residential, and as part of their growth enhancement strategy map, it is identified as a primary growth area. The property was zoned to residential agricultural in 1973. That's when zoning was established for Davie County. The proposed zoning is the special purpose district, and I won't explain, the board, we talked about this quite a bit, but, you know, there's certain acreage amounts, certain dimensional requirements and things of that nature. But the biggest requirement is the, that the applicant has to hold a community meeting, which they did do that, and those meeting notes are in your agenda package as well. As I mentioned, this is a special conditions zoning, meaning that the board has the ability to place conditions on the use. These conditions can range from the location on the use of the property to the timing of the development, buffers, landscaping, things of that nature. But it has to be those type conditions that help meet the conformance of the use to the surrounding area or, and/or compliance with a growth plan or a land use plan. Utilities, public water, and public septic would be the utilities that would be available to the site. However, the applicant has identified that this use that they would only want for. This property is a solar generating facility. The issues to consider as a special conditions zoning, you know, the board should consider the property's potential as a residential or agricultural use. If the rezoning is approved, this isn't the last stop for the applicant. They would still have to come back through our TRC, our Technical Review Committee, for development permits and as well as to review those site plans for conformance with any condition and/or ordinance requirements. The, in your package are some draft conditions that were approved by the planning board and submitted to you. These aren't the only conditions, as mentioned. Based on what you hear tonight, you may add additional, or you may delete. But the draft conditions, as they stand right now, are is that the use of the property shall be limited to a solar energy generating facility, that the applicant will obtain a driveway permit from NC DOT, that the applicant shall obtain an erosion control permit from North Carolina DEQ, and the site shall be developed according to the attached site plan. The planning board did hear this at their February 25 meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval for both the rezoning and the conditions by vote of 7 in favor and 0 opposed. Board action, the board should either, 1, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve the amendment; 2, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to deny; or 3, defer the request for additional consideration. As a special conditions rezoning, it's a two-step process, so the rezoning legislative aspect would be voted on first, and then any conditions would be voted on second for that. So, this has been a duly advertised meeting. Mail notices sent to those adjoining property owners, signs placed on the property as well as the appropriate legal notice was run into the Davie enterprise. So, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the board may have of me on this request.
Okay, does anyone have any questions, Mr. Meadwell, at this time? Don't go far. Thank you. All right. All right, so this is a public hearing, and once again, I will turn it over to Mr. Vogler.
The Chair has announced this is the day and hour of a public hearing pursuant to the North Carolina General Statutes 153A and Chapter 155 of the North Carolina Code of Davie County Code of Ordinance. This board will be conducting a public hearing of proposed amendment to the Davie County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 155 zoning ordinance on application of rezone approximately 50-acre portion of a 56.6-acre tract parcel identified as E500000010 from residence or agriculture quality design overlay to special purpose-special conditions. This parcel is located adjacent to 273 Pudding Ridge Road in Davie County. Do you notice that this public hearing was advertised, ran in a local newspaper with general circulation in the county as required by law on August 27 and September 3, 2020, as noted in the notice of public hearing included in your agenda packet? I would ask for all who wish to comment at this public hearing, come forward to the podium one at a time, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. So, each, any of you that wish to comment can come to the podium one at a time.
Hello, board. My name is Landon Abernathy. I'm Director of Development at Birdseye Renewable Energy. We are the developers that are, they're proposing this project, and I just have a couple of slides here that I'd like to run through. So, Birdseye, we're a Charlotte-based solar developer. We've been active in North Carolina solar since 2009. We've developed everything from a few acres right up through about a 450-acre project that we currently have under construction with Duke Energy in Catawba County, in the Maiden area. So, yeah, we were amongst the earliest doing solar in North Carolina. We've been in front of this board before doing solar in Davie County, and that's, it's always been a great place to work for us. So, you know, right off, I want to say thanks to the board for holding this public hearing tonight. This project's been stranded for some time now, so we came through the planning board back in February. We were on the agenda for your April meeting, and as we all know, the world went sideways there for a little bit. So, yeah, good, good to have an excuse to get out of the house a little bit. Good to see business getting back to normal here in Davie County and across the state. So, this project, Perrin Dell Holdings, is a little bit different from the typical business model that Birdseye follows. Just like most solar developers in North Carolina, we're typically developing for Duke Energy's benefit. This is one that we're developing in partnership with Energy United, the local electric membership cooperative. This was cited and developed as a, as a response to their competitive bid proposal middle of last year. So, Energy United actually pointed to a couple of substations, thought that now was the right time for them to do solar for their own memberships benefit, and identified some substations for us to take a look at. So, as, as a developer that participated in that RFP, we looked at the projects that were available, the areas that were available, and by far, this was the most appropriate location for, for a solar project. Just felt like we could do a really nice job of getting a project in here. So, we got, got the award for the RFP in, in December of last year. We won that bid, and we were planning to bring the, the project on this year. Unfortunately, that, that's not able to happen with, with COVID response, but we are hoping to bring it on beginning to middle of next year and have it producing for Energy United. So, this will be between a 5 and 7 megawatt project. We're still working through our final interconnection study with, with Duke Energy and Energy United. We are not planning any sort of expansion here, so the 50 acres that we plan to rezone would, would be the full extent of that project. I know that the board here has heard a lot from solar developers over the years, ourselves included, so I'm, I'm not going to, you know, go through all of your, your typical solar pitch. You guys have heard it. You know, it's quiet, it's safe, it's low to the ground, it's low traffic, no impact on surrounding property values, low burden on county services, significant tax increase for, for the county. I do have some guests here with me tonight. If the board would like, they're, they're here to answer questions. I've got Rich Kirkland of Kirkland Appraisals, who I know has presented to this board in the past on his research of the effect on property values nearby solar farms. I've also got Tommy Cleveland. Tommy is an independent solar engineer. He was previously with the North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center, where he authored the, the report on health and safety that's in your packet. So, he's here to answer questions for you as well. What I would like to spend a little bit of time doing though is just providing some context for this project and really where it sits, how it ended up here, and what we've done in our design to, to try to help out how it fits in into the community and into its neighboring area. So, as I mentioned, Energy United, you know, kind of pointed out a number of substations that look good for them to inject power onto their grid. There's actually a substation, if you can see where my cursor is right now, and one of the requirements of the RFP was that we provide a direct interconnection into a substation. So, you know, as we, as developers, we're looking at this property, obviously, this, this looked like a really nice site for us. Big red flag there being the golf course directly adjacent to it. So, you know, we knew from day one that this could be a little bit tricky. Before, we went to Mr. Howe and signed up a long-term lease agreement, we actually went out on the site, walked around, went and walked the golf course, you know, really tried to get a lay for the land, and just felt that, given the topography in the area, the large landhold gave us some flexibility with, with buffers and what we were able to do to buffer against adjacent uses. And then all of the standing vegetation that exists on site, we felt like we could develop something really nice that would fit into the area. So, we did proceed with that, cited the project on the 50 acres, as you can see here, and just worked as closely as we could with, with directly adjacent and further afield neighbors as, as we worked through our design. So, you know, earliest stages, our first call was to the owner of the Pudding Ridge Golf Course. I should note that the golf course is separate from the homeowners' association, and from, from the earliest stage, the golf course never had any issue with, with the project as it was, as it was designed and where it sits. We also got some feedback real early stage that this parcel up to the north had been subdivided, and the houses were going to be built there. So, we reached out to those folks. Very early stage, Mr. Webb, who's here with us today, and his son, Ryan Dooley. Ryan's actually building a house right about where my cursor is right now. So, you know, we started talking to those folks very early. The Sykes family, who lives directly to the north up here, the Hunter family, who owns the property down to the south. the property down to the south and actually lives across the street, and then Mr. Howe lives on the east side over here. So, first calls to those directly adjacent neighbors. From there, we went out early stage again to the HOA, the Pudding Ridge HOA, went, met with the, with the president of the HOA, Amy Bakas, and a number of other community members, walked the neighborhood, walked the golf course, walked the perimeter of the project, actually even got up in a second story house at one of the highest elevations here along Cornwallis, and just tried to see, you know, is there going to be any impact for those folks? I left that meeting completely convinced that there would be no impact. As you can see here today, you know, we've, we've still got some contention from, from the, the Pudding Ridge HOA, but we've done everything we could throughout the process to maintain open dialogue with those folks. Anything that the board has been provided with, the HOA has also been provided with at every step of the way, including the visualization analysis that you guys have in your packets tonight. So, just wanted to touch on a couple of aspects, just how we, we really are, you know, meeting and exceeding the county's solar ordinance requirements. So, as I mentioned, we met with Mr. Webb and Mr. Dooley that, that first trip out to the site. We, we came prepared with a plan for how we were going to mitigate against any impact on, on that brand-new house being built. And, and what we're going to do there is we're doing the ordinance-defined type B buffer up along this northern line. Any place that we can use existing, maintained vegetation, mature canopy, we're leaving that in place. But in addition to that type B buffer, we're actually coming up on the north side of the buffer and doing what we call a managed regrowth area. So, the idea here is that we come in with native species at a stem level, small plants. We've got a mix that, that we put together in conjunction with the Fish and Wildlife Service. The idea is twofold, provide a, a nice visual screen that can be successful without a whole lot of irrigation, it's native, so it's made for this area. So, get a nice thick visual screen in there, and then we also provide some, some wildlife and biological support, so pollinator support, wildlife forage and habitat. So, a, a nice mix going up against the north side there. In addition to the managed regrowth area, we've also committed to not doing a chain-link fence with three strand barbed wire. So, we can meet the requirements of the Davie County Ordinance and the National Electric Code using this, we call it a deerbuster fence, and we actually take that fence and we install it upside down from how it's supposed to be installed. But the idea being, you know, small, small mammals and vertebrates can pass through the farm, but it also has a less sort of commercial industrial look to it. We can use a narrower gauge wire, it's a wider mesh, so a lot less impact on, on the, on the view shed. Yeah, so that, that's what we plan to do up along that northern boundary, and then as we come across to the other side where we don't have any existing vegetation, we're going to do the same thing on this northern line, and just making sure that we're fully shielding that impact from the Sykes family and then the folks all the way up across the road up here. One more thing I should point out, we, we've also backed down 750 feet off of Pudding Ridge Road. That's something that we had committed to from day one, just didn't want to impact the, the travel in public, people see it from the road. It's tucked back well off of the street, will, will be easily buffered from view on the road. So, as we move on around the project now on, on this western tree line, this is one that, you know, in those early days when we walked the golf course, we actually had some feedback from the golf course owner that he, he may not even mind if, if we were to, to cut those trees and get some sun on his green down here. But in, in talking with the HOA, it, it was readily apparent that, that mature canopy is of utmost importance to them, and shielding that view as you get to those higher elevations, just making sure that we've got enough canopy in there to, to really block that. So, while it would be far preferential for us, just shave everything we can right up to the property line and then come back behind it with a type-two buffer, we have committed to leaving 25 feet of that vegetation in place. Mature canopy, that means we're going to have to drag or draw our modules back about 120 feet inside of the property line over here to get out of that shade impact, but something that, that we're, we're willing to do there. So, last thing I'll mention here, we've also got an existing 70-foot tree line across the entire southern border that, that'll stay in place against the Hunter property. Wetland, this is a delineated wetland in, in the south center here, that'll be left untouched and natural as well. We, we don't plan to impact that wetland area. So, thinking a little bit about, you know, the, the contention that unfortunately, we have not been able to, to alleviate with, with the Pudding Ridge HOA, you know, again, we, we've just done everything we could, every step of the way to try to keep open rapport, open dialogue going, and, and just haven't been able to get around it. But it, it has driven us to, to do a good bit of diligence, which you guys have, for your consideration and your packets on the view shed. It's never been the intent of Bird's Eye from day one to communicate that we can completely eradicate this view from, from the landscape. You know, you get out the binoculars at some point in the middle of winter, you're, you're going to be able to see something through there possibly. What we have tried to communicate is just the de minimis impact that actually exists. So, you know, the closest home inside of the Pudding Ridge HOA is about 1,700 feet away up at these higher elevations. So, we focused on those, and then as you go down Cornwallis back up towards Pudding Ridge, you're getting up to, you know, 2,000, 2,300, well, well over a third of a mile away. So, you know, the intent here is not to say this is a complete opaque barrier here, and there's no way to see through it. It's that at that distance, over multiple tree lines across the golf course, the lowline dark nature of the solar farm, it, it really is just going to blend into the background. And we put together some, some photo simulations here, and, you know, as expected, when, when you color the modules, the, the color they actually are, dark blue, you can't see anything. So, we switched all of those modules over to bright red, just trying to really make it pop, what that potential impact is back behind the tree line. I've got Kevin Gorman here, landscape architect with Sun Studio, who actually laid out these visualization models for us, and, and we were going, you know, back and forth on, on our, our photo. This was taken in January of this year, so no foliage on the trees. I'll point out, you know, you can't see anything behind the tree line, so the green that you see over here is actually the backside of the golf course, and then we're beyond the next tree line behind that, a, a good ways out, 1,700 feet or more. Just really de minimis impact again. So, I'm, I'm happy to dig into this view shed analysis in as much depth as you'd like. We've got Kevin here who can speak to the methodology of how he actually laid it out and the conservatism that's baked into the model, but we, we think that we've done some pretty good diligence here, that, that there really is no impact on, on the community. Another source of contention that, that I know we, we've heard from, from the Pudding Ridge HOA is just the consistency with adopted plans for the area. So, I filed an addendum to you folks on Friday. You've also got printed out in, in the folders that we sent out, kind of going line by line through the comprehensive plan and some of the growth enhancement goals, and how we feel that, that we are consistent. But just to hit some of the highlights there, you know, it's residential in, in the comprehensive land use plan. I will point out that one parcel away, that this goes to an industrial zone as you move south. So, while I, I would never argue that solar is even a good fit for an industrial use, it is a nice buffer between uses. So, it's a low-impact residential agricultural, you know, use that, that does not have impact and could be a nice buffer against some future higher intensive use. In the growth enhancement strategy, we're listed as a primary growth area, which would call for a mixture of residential, commercial, and industrial, so maybe expected in that. Just a couple of points from the comprehensive plan. Again, we feel that we're a quiet passive use, fit in well with residential and ag use without negative impacts, preserve the land for future use, there's always the ability at the end of our term to go back to ag use. We're, we're obligated, both through the county ordinance and through our lease agreement, to give this property back to the Howe family in, in the same shape that we got it, pre-development shape, so it can go right back into residential, commercial, agriculture, whatever makes sense at that point. We think we can use an effective use of distance and buffering to protect these rural vistas. Another point in the plan, specifically in, in the long-range plan, discourages residential development with poor soils for septic. This is listed on the comprehensive land use plan as having very limited soils for septic, demonstrated inability or difficulty in passing perk tests. Mr. Webb can talk all about this, had trouble permitting a, a single residence on a 16-acre tract, which is, is the one that his son is building right here. So, even if this were to go into residential without access to county sewer, it, it's a long time until it could be developed as such. We're less than 2% impervious with minimal grading, that'll be regulated by NCDQ through our stormwater erosion control permit. The wetland that's on site will be left in its naturalized state. That connects to the branch in Dutchman Creek Conservation Zone over to the west of the project, and, and again, you know, we're providing this pollinator wildlife supportive buffering fencing plantings, et cetera. So, yeah, in, in conclusion, I would say, you know, we feel like this, this rezoning application is appropriate for the area, low impact on, on the community, gives the ability to simultaneously bank the land for future use, allow county infrastructure to, to catch up with those long-range plan goals while increasing the tax revenue at the county and allowing the, the landowner to, to realize some revenue on, on the, on the property. With that, I'll stop. Happy to answer any questions, or I'd also like to hand it over to Steve MacArthur, Director of Engineering Services with Energy United, and he can talk a little bit from the Energy United point of view.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Abernathy at this point?
One thing, it states in one of the restrictions that no more than 70, 75% of the tract shall be covered by solar panels. Explain that a little further to me.
Yeah, we, we are still under that, so if we go up to the, to the site plan here, we, we've actually, well, if I can get to zoom in. We've actually got a call-out for how much of this property is going to be covered. So, you know, we, we've got our area, our envelope that we're rezoning, but then inside of that, we've got setbacks and shade buffers, areas that, that don't count against that. So, I believe we are at... Yeah, we, we would be allowed 42.39, we're at 41.96 acres of, of solar coverage. So, right, right at that limit, but that, that's sort of driving the maximum size of this project.
Any other questions for Mr. Abernathy at this time?
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Like Landon said, my name is Stephen MacArthur. I'm the Director of Engineering Services for Energy United. Been there about 31 years so far, so been there for a little bit. Just wanted to give you all some background as to why Energy United went out for an RFP for solar. So, back in 2007, North Carolina actually passed a law, a mandate that all utilities, including Energy United, would receive approximately 10% of their total power usage from renewable energy, and there was a portion of this that had to be solar. So, like I said, this was back in 2007. They called for the mandate to be met by 2018, which Energy United did meet that mandate, but it's a percentage. So, as our load grows, Energy United continually has to add renewable resources in order to continue to beat our mandate. So, we're about 750 megawatts, so 10% is 75 megawatts. This farm, like Landon said, is five to seven megawatts, so it's just going to help us to continue to meet that mandate. The other thing that we've seen is our members want us to continue to add renewable energy to our portfolio. We have a lot of members who come to us and ask us what we're doing for green power, reducing our carbon footprint, that type thing, and this is one of the ways that we address that and go about that, is we are continually looking for ways to add renewable energy to our portfolio. But the other thing we really stress too, to our membership, is we want to be able to add it in an economic way. We don't want to increase your power costs, we want to look for projects that really makes sense, that really from our standpoint, we can do economically but still be renewable. So, one of the things we did in 2019 to gauge the members' interest was we actually entered into a pilot community solar project. We had some solar panels on some of our properties in Lexington and Statesville and various other places. We had about 66 solar panels, so we started a community solar project where we would let our members purchase the power usage from one of those solar panels. We immediately sold out all 66 panels and have since been looking for ways that we can increase that program. So, with this solar farm, we have about 100 members right now who are on a waiting list to continue this program. This will allow us to continue that program, add some, and also adds the capacity to be able to continue to expand the program. So, in order to meet the demand from our membership and our mandates, we did go out for an RFP to solar developers last year. Like Landon said, we gave them several different sites on our system, but there's a reason why we chose the sites we did. And this particular one, first is the site is adjacent to a existing substation. This makes the cost to interconnect to our system much less complex and much less expensive. When you have solar farms out away from substations, sometimes you have to build additional lines out to them, all which raise the cost of, of the solar farm, and in the end, raise the cost that we have to pay for the production from the solar farm. So, this substation was chosen because it has the capacity, the equipment, and the room to accommodate such an, such an interconnect. Most of the substations on our system would not be able to support a sub, project of this type, or if they did, it would require expensive capital upgrades to be able to upgrade the station to the size, equipment, and everything else. There just were a few select stations on our system that already had the ability to accommodate solar farms of this type, and this was one of them. And that's why we went out for the RFP at that time. A lot of times in more rural areas, there's just simply not the infrastructure or the substation equipment, just simply doesn't have the capacity, because obviously being more rural, a lot of times, there's not as much load. You actually need some amount of load just so the equipment's there, you have the capacity, you have the ability to support that solar farm. From Energy United's perspective, this project has been studied and approved for the current proposed size. Obviously, we go through a lot of different studies to be able to reach a decision on what size, so we really don't see us expanding at this site, and as Landon said, he has a lot of land constraints that'll keep them from doing that as well. So, just to mention that, we really aren't looking to expand this site here. When citing these projects, like I said, there's many different variables that come into play. I've talked to some of those about from Energy United's standpoint, but we also receive our bulk power from Duke Energy, so we interconnect in certain areas to Duke Energy's transmission system. So, not only does Energy United have certain constraints that we have just from our system, we also have to go to Duke Energy and say, hey, you know, what are your constraints? Do you have the ability to be able to support this? So, there's a lot of different variables that play into that, but ultimately, what it means is, you know, when you take all the economic variables and then the system constraints, there are just certain areas that pop out really as good for solar energy. They have the economic ability to be able to do it, it's close to the substations, you don't have to build a lot of infrastructure, you don't have to do a lot of upgrades, and from an overall system constraint, they just really come out to where you don't have a lot of, I guess, constraints against them. So, it's when these combination of variables come into play that, you know, and there's land available for the project, those areas tend to get a lot of interest in solar farms. And Davie County in this particular area is one of those areas where it's just receiving a lot of interest, because all those variables do kind of come together and meet there. So, we've worked with Bird's Eye and other projects before, they've been a great company to work with. We're definitely happy to work with them again on this project. They've always been very responsive to our needs and, and anything we bring to them. So, you know, they've made a great partner for us. So, with that, if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to, or if you need anything else from me.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a couple of quick questions. Of the 100 people that are on your waiting list for that special project, how many of those are in Davie County?
Um, to be honest, I do not know that. Probably shouldn't have been prepared for that question, but yeah.
Get us that, if you would, get us that answer, and the, the ultimate percentage of the power that's generated from that, from what's going on out there, how much of that stays in Davie County?
Okay, so, you know, that's one of the reasons why we look at this in terms of how much load is in that area to be able to support it. So, pretty much all the energy generated would be used relatively locally. It's a tough question, because like I said, it- It's a tough question because, like I said, it goes up into the grid and the grid's kind of like a cloud that flows everything, electrons go all over the place. But this area has enough to be able to support that output at all times, 100% within Davie County and that substation.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be certainly happy to provide that information.
Yeah.
I had a question, if you don't mind. A while ago, you were talking, I think it's 10%, you said had to be produced renewable energy. I was trying to follow that with the megawatts and all that and converted over to percentages and everything and got lost sort of in the translation. How much, what percentage are you at now as far as renewable energy goes?
Okay, so right now, we've met our 10% mandate, which was in 2018, and we're probably sitting somewhere around 12% as far as in our total portfolio. But again, as our load grows, we have to continually add more. And plus too, one of the things we do is we purchase RECs, so that's our renewable energy credit. That's one of the ways that we can go about fulfilling that mandate. So we're also always looking for ways to replace existing renewable energy with less expensive, more economic renewable energy. But like I said, again, we have to continually grow that amount to continue to meet our percentage.
Well, and we know the percentage is not going to go down. It'll probably go up.
No, it's going to go up.
Eventually.
We're trying to prepare ourselves for the future.
Okay, thank you.
You indicated that you have no plans to expand, but there's nothing to preclude you from that either.
I would say there's nothing really to preclude us from it. No, sir. I mean, we would, obviously, the substation itself, this project of this size is pretty much at the capacity of that substation to be able to support it. So to be able to expand it at this existing substation would start requiring a lot of capital improvement. And quite frankly, like I talked about, one of the things that we've looked at is where can we add it economically so that we can keep our costs down to our members? So instead of doing that, I guess what I'm saying is we would probably look at other areas first before we started trying to upgrade this substation to be able to handle more.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
I do have one more, if you don't mind. This 12% that you're talking about, is that over your whole grid or is that just here in Davie County?
That's over our whole grid, yes, sir.
Now, what area do you cover?
So we cover 19 different counties in North Carolina. We cover all the way from the Virginia border up around the Madison area, down through Davidson County, Lexington, all that area, down across to Corneus, and then of course, Winston, Davie, on up towards Statesville and Taylorsville. So we cover a pretty good area. We're the second largest energy provider in North Carolina and definitely cover a good-sized area.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Since no one else is jumping up, I will. I'm Wayne Webb. I did own the property that is adjacent to the north side of this tract that they're talking about. I currently re-leased part of that property from my son to grow hay on, actually. And it is literally in his backyard. He is totally for this project. He met with Bird's Eye, as I did, and he's currently building his house where they pointed to earlier, which is only probably 50, 60 yards from the corner of this project. And he is in favor of it. I'm in favor of it. As county manager, and I well know, there is no way that you can build a house on this property. And as all of y'all know, rooftops don't pay you taxes. They pay taxes, but they don't support themselves. With the sheriff, the fire departments, and the education, we all know that a home does not support enough taxes to pay for those entities. This farm right here would pay more money towards the county than it costs the county quite a bit, where a house doesn't. You couldn't build houses there anyway because they ain't going to be septic, right, John?
Difficult.
We're not going to get a septic system in that area. There's no way to put one. The soil just will not accommodate it. But we are in favor of it. You cannot see it. Pudding Ridge is going to tell you they can see it, but they can't, honestly. I've been there. I know the Pudding Ridge development very well. I know the golf course very well. I know this property very well. We will be able to see it from my son's house. We'll see it, but we're probably the only people besides the other neighbor over there that can see this project. We're all in favor of it. We think it's a good fit for the county because, mainly because of the taxes. You can't make money on houses and taxes in Davie County or any other county as far as that's concerned. But this project will not cost you anything. You don't have to worry about the fire department. Sheriff's Department's not going to show up there. There's no reason for it to cost the county anything other than gain the tax money that we desperately need to hold our taxes down for the residents that do live here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Backus, and I live on Pudding Ridge. And I have met with the developers. We have walked the property together. We have asked questions of them. And one of the first questions we asked them was, will our energy rates go down if this goes in? And they said, no. And we said, will this energy be used for the Farmington Road area in Pudding Ridge? And I think you heard the Energy United gentleman say, well, that's hard to tell. Well, what they told us was, no, it goes into the general grid for use of Energy United customers and doesn't stay in Farmington Road or on Pudding Ridge. And Mr. Webb pointed out that he knows Pudding Ridge very well, and he's lived in the area. Well, I live on Pudding Ridge, and I look down on that area, as do my 37 neighbors that I represent. I'm president of the HOA. And we have met with Landon Abernathy, and they're great. They're very nice people. They're smooth. They give you a great delivery with their product, right? They're checking all the boxes. But we do look at it, and Landon Abernathy will tell you, it isn't completely shielded from view. You will see it. And in the summer, when the leaves are on the trees, no, you probably won't see some of it. But five, six months of the year, when the deciduous trees have lost their leaves, we will be looking at it. And I know there've been a lot of chatter and calls made. You've heard from many of the residents on Pudding Ridge, and they have told you, we are not in favor of this. We do not want it. We do not want to look at it, and we do not want to drive by it every single day. You will see it from Farmington Road, Pudding Ridge Road, Cornwallis Drive, and as you head up Pudding Ridge and get to higher levels above the ridge, as you go on up towards Cana, you'll see it from there too. It's just simply not true that you won't be able to see it, because you will. You will, I promise you. Now, there's some other things I want to touch on tonight that I think are very important. And one of those is that Davie County has spent a great deal of time and resources to develop a comprehensive plan for our community. And within this plan are the goals and objectives for future land use and economic development of the county. You all touch on the business sector, you touch on land use, you touch on land preservation, and a whole host of things within this comprehensive plan that was just adopted in December. And do you know what word is not used in that comprehensive plan one single time? Solar. Because you don't see it as a fit in this area right now within this plan. The gentleman who talked from Energy United told you they're mandated to have 10% produced from renewable energy. He told you they're at 12% right now. Well, simple math tells you they're over their mandate, right? Why are we continuing down this road? Why are we continuing to put these solar farms in Davie County without a plan for them? Now, look, we all agree that renewable energy is good. It's great. Do we need it? Absolutely. But it has to be done thoughtfully and consistently with a plan. And in this plan for Davie County that was newly adopted, it talks about bringing new business into Davie County. Well, a solar farm is a business, right? And you have a metric that you created of criteria within your plan, a checklist of seven items. And I'm asking you, does a solar farm meet any of those items in the comprehensive plan when it lists new business coming into the county that they rate? It doesn't. So who's benefiting from this? The landowner that's leasing his land? Well, that's great. I don't begrudge him that. But let me say, that land has been farmland for decades. I think it, I think it was mentioned tonight, it's dating back to when the county was, started doing land use in the 60s, so it's over 50, for 50 years it's been zoned the same way. Well, Pudding Ridge was developed in the 90s, and people moved up there because it's peaceful and it's quiet, and we like our views up there. We have five out of the 37 homeowners in our development are members of the golf course. That's what, roughly 14% live up there because they want to play golf? The other 85 are living up there because they like the views, they like it to be quiet, and they like what they see. Now, I walked the land with Landon Abernathy, as he said, and look, these are very nice people. I'm not disputing that. I'm not here to tell you they're not. They are. They're wonderful to deal with, and they are responsive, and they answer questions. But the fact of the matter is, we just have two different opinions on this matter. But I will tell you, when we walked the land, and when he's talking about this stretch on the backside of the golf course, he's like, oh, yeah, you know, we'll keep this tree, and we'll keep that tree, and, you know, all this old growth of trees, okay? But if you look at the view shed analysis that's submitted, a lot of those trees are coming out. And why are they coming out? Because when you have a large canopy of trees, it shades the panels, and they're not going to get sun on them, which they need. So I think it's important to balance what is being said and presented to what is actually going to happen. And we are the ones that have to live with it when it actually happens. We are the ones that live there. We are the ones that are affected. So I'm asking you to carefully consider everything when you're reviewing this data and you are thinking about what is best for the community and what is best for Pudding Ridge. And I will remind you, or not say remind you, but I will say, they have that substation, if you looked on the map, there's basically the square that they want to develop into the solar plant, into the solar farm. Then there's a substation. Right next door is another very large tract of land, probably just a little bit larger than the one proposed for rezoning tonight. Okay, so if you say, yes, you can have a solar farm on this land right here, and you have an adjacent landowner butting right up to it, how are you going to tell them, no, they can't have a solar farm too? So currently, right now in Davie County, you have about 600 acres of solar farm. So if you say, okay, how far you can do 50, then you can't say no to the one next door, that's at least 50. Now we have one-seventh of the solar farms in Davie County located right along Farmington Road that you have designated in your plan as a primary growth area. Well, the points have been made that, you know, this isn't going to perk, the soils are bad. Well, someone was able to get a house on that land by some means, right? I mean, certainly someone else can. I don't know how much money they want to throw at it, but certainly someone else will be able to. In your plan, you have laid out a vision for the next 20 years. You have talked about land use in your plan. You're two, you list seven goals in your, under the land use section, and I want to read you the first two. One is utilizing vacant land space and underutilized properties, right? The second goal under your land use plan is preserving the rural character of Davie County. Now, I think we can all agree that the rural character of Davie County doesn't involve solar farms. And this proposed area, as the crow flies, is about four tenths of a mile from our school cluster of Davie High School. You guys are all very familiar with that. I know you worked hard on this project. So I'm asking you, is this an appropriate use of this land, of this land at this time? Does it fall into the comprehensive plan you guys have so carefully crafted? You had dozens of people work on this plan. It spanned, what, a two-year period? And it's newly adopted? And nowhere in this plan does it fall into place? And within this plan that you have also comes ordinances and rules to follow regarding the plan. And under the county ordinance regarding special use permits, there are five different things the board has to affirm when they approve a permit for rezoning. I won't bore you with all five, but I'm going to mention two that I think are especially important, and I quote, "The special use will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with the plan of development of the county." Does that fit here? Can you say yes to that? I don't think so. Here's the other one. "The proposed use or project will be consistent with the Davie County Land Development Plan and/or other adopted plans and policies." This proposal is not consistent with anything that is in the comprehensive plan. What you do have in the plan is you talk about an annual review where you make, you know, things change over time. You can't possibly project exactly what's going to happen 15 years from now. So you review the plan and you tweak it. Maybe that's what you should do. I would also suggest that your zoning and planning board should be very versed on what is in the comprehensive plan. Because I was at the zoning and planning board meeting when this project came through, and I think it's worth telling you what happened. This is what happened. It's on the agenda. We go, the plan is presented by the developers, they take public comments. One gentleman got up to speak for it. In fact, it was Mr. Webb. And then six people after that got up and said, we are against this for various reasons. I spoke about the comprehensive plan and how it didn't fit in. I asked him, how does this fit in with the plan? Public comments were done. There was zero, no discussion after public comments. The zoning and planning board did not discuss one word of what was said from the public. A motion was made, it was seconded, as you heard earlier, it was adopted unanimously. And then at the end, as you know how procedure goes, there's a citation that's issued, and there's verbiage in there stating how it conforms with the comprehensive plan. I have yet to have one person tell me how this fits into the comprehensive plan that was just adopted in December. I mean, can you do that? Would you please do that during discussion tonight? Because there are many of us in here who don't understand. You simply, here's our plan, here's our vision, here's what we see for Davie County for 20 years, and there's no mention of it at all. And then this comes up, and now you're asking the public, the citizens who live there, hey, you might want to live with this. You might have to live with this. Well, we don't. I'm asking you, as members and leaders in our community, please listen to what the public has said. I spoke to one of the commissioners as late as Thursday of last week, and I was told that not one person had contacted them to vote in favor of this project. Not one. Another commissioner has said people have blown up their phones from our, blown up his phone from our neighborhood in opposition to this. We're asking you to listen to the 37 people that vote in your district that, excuse me, that live here. We do not want this. We're asking you, follow your plan as you laid out. Follow your plan. You had focus groups, committees, local government officials all weigh in on this plan, and yet this is not addressed in it at all. So how are you going to deviate from this? How do you comply with the county ordinance and affirm that this plan fits, that this proposed rezoning fits in with the comprehensive plan? Because it doesn't. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have solar. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, plan for it carefully and consider it. But if you look at this proposal and you look at your comprehensive plan, this is a clear no. It's not even easy. It's a clear no. According to what you have laid out, is your vision and where you see us going. And we're asking you, please, let us have confidence in you. This is what you sold us. This is what you adopted. This is what you told us you were going to do. So are we going to deviate from the plan? I mean, this is a clear no, and I really don't see what a deferral will accomplish for a couple reasons. One, you kick the can down the road, and it comes up at a meeting a month, two months, six months from now. The public here in my neighborhood is not changing their mind. We all still... We all still feel the exact same way. Your, your ordinances, your vision, your plan and your goals haven't changed. So, how are you going to wait six months and then bring it up again? It still doesn't fit in the plan. It doesn't make sense to me. So I'm asking you, this is a clear no. We're asking you to say no to this. You know, by the requirements of the ordinance, by the goals and objectives set forth in the comprehen, comprehensive plan, this should be a clear no. And, listen, if you follow your established framework, this request doesn't meet any of your standards that you have set forward. If I'm seeing it wrong after I'm done speaking, please set me straight. Because I've read the plan. I don't see it in there. I think the developers have also read the plan and they've presented you with some things tonight to maybe think about updating your plan with, but as it stands now, it doesn't work. So I would just like to say, in regard to this particular matter before you and talking about this specific request, a deferral for any length of time should not change the outcome. Decisions can be tough, but if you use the metrics and the data that you have set forth as your plan, you know, your ordinances, the goals in the plan, the policies, this should clearly be a no. Thank you.
My name is Stanley Watkins and I live in the Putting Ridge neighborhood by the golf course. And I wanted to speak about two things, two particular issues regarding the solar farm. One is potential glint and glare problems and the other is view shed analysis. Now, I'll start out by saying, I don't think there will be glint and glare problems. I spoke with Landon, he did complete an analysis. And Landon, I believe you said, only at an extreme plate, the angle, and at some time of year was it even possible? And that you could easily limit that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, my point is not that this is going to be a big problem for glint and glare at this installation, but that some sort of ordinance for remediation of glint and glare should be written in to any and all future projects, just to make sure it is not a problem. Okay? So again, I don't, you know, I don't think it's a problem here, but it's important to have, you know, something written in there, so if it is a problem, it has to be remediated. Okay. The other issue is the view shed analysis. Now, I spent hours and hours and hours over many weeks, you know, getting elevations, measuring all the tree heights and looking at things just from all over the neighborhood and along the tree line property. And I'll say, the tree heights that I calculated and everything, they were all the same heights, I believe, that Landon got, so no problem there. The, the problem comes with assumptions you make. Now, the tree line that could shield our neighborhood from the solar farm, they're going to leave a twenty-five-foot band. Well, of the trees that are there right now, seventy-eight percent of them will be cut. You know, I've measured the whole area and everything, the area of trees. So that's what we're left it with. And in the middle of the summer, twenty-five feet, once you, you know, let the trees grow and all that stuff, it might be a sufficient barrier to where you wouldn't see it. Now, in the winter, I've gone and stood at the twenty-five-foot line. It's just like looking through nothing. You know, you just have some tree trunks. And that, it just has almost a zero visual opacity. So, my conclusion really is that the northern half of the neighborhood will be able to see the solar farm for about six months out of the year. And when we're just walking up and down the street, taking a walk, so we're going to have to look at it some of the time. Now, the picture Landon showed you that showed the, from the deck of the one house, it showed the silo, the camera kind of distorts that a little. If you go walk in our neighborhood, that silo looks very close. And I don't think the picture supports the viewpoint that you can't see it. Because you can see over top of all the tree lines on the golf course, right up to the tree line at the edge of the property. And so you've got this little twenty-five-foot tree line, in the winter, that's no screen at all. And that house is at about the southernmost point of where the solar farm is visible in the neighborhood. Different for different homes. And, and you know, it's not just an issue for our neighborhood. It's not an issue for me. I can't see it from my house. But it's our neighborhood, it's our community, it's our county. And for the people that live higher up on Putting Ridge Road, the elevation increases, let's see, it's eight-hundred-and-twelve feet up at the ground level at the top. And the highest level in the neighborhood, I believe, is around seven-hundred-and-fifty. And again, the problem with elevations is, our neighborhood is, is some of the higher parts, about seven-hundred-and-fifty feet. The ground drops off, you know, across the golf course, starts to go back up toward the area of the solar farm. The solar farm property, the elevation along the west end, I believe the lowest is seven-hundred-and-twenty-one feet or something. And then it rises up to a maximum of seven-hundred-and-fifty-two, I think. So it rises. So it's very difficult to screen that. Just for the, our neighborhood, I calculated that it would take a forty-five-foot tall, completely opaque barrier all year. Now, if you had that, you couldn't see it. But unfortunately, we don't have that in the winter. And again, this is not just an issue for our neighborhood, but other places. So, that's pretty much, you know, my analysis thing. The assumption that the trees provide a barrier, I think, is, is not valid because it's too thin, an area of trees, and most of them are deciduous. Any questions? Now, I do have many additional photographs, if any of you want to contact me individually or if you wanted to come out and look at it with me.
Mr. Watkins, what was your address, sir?
Um, 126 Green Court.
Thank you.
My name is Wayne Sykes. I live at 305 Putting Ridge Road and I'm the closest one to the solar farm, if it's implemented. Approximately three-hundred feet from it, give or take a little bit. And I have no problem with it at all. Between me and the solar farm is a hayfield, which Mr. Wade owned. I don't have any problem with it. And it's one of the few that you can't even see from the road. If you're coming down Putting Ridge, you won't be able to even see it. If you have a buffer of eight feet high, you can't even see it. I've, traveling, I've seen solar farms and you can see them, but fifteen, twenty seconds you're going by it in the road, you can see them, but they're not that obje, objectable to me. Kind of like a Hoover Dam's not and it produce electric power. We have to have power from somewhere. And I think Davie County should move forward, not backwards. An ability to self-sustain a little bit, anyway. I don't have a problem with it. It's a great neighbor. It makes no noise, there's no sound, no, nothing, it's quiet. It's a great use of the land because the land doesn't support, it won't support families. You can grow crops on it, but that's all. But I think the solar will be great. And if it's not in twenty years, it comes back down to plain old dirt. So I am for it. Like I said, I'm the closest one to it, I have no objection. I think it'll work out very good. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Julie Smith and I live at 362 Cornwallis Drive in the Putting Ridge Golf Course Community. And I too am not in favor of the solar farm for several reasons. One, when most of us, or all of us moved there, none of us moved there to look at a solar farm. We li, moved there for the peaceful community, the rural environment that we live in, that I can sit on my back porch every night and it is calm and quiet and I can look out and see beauty. I don't see solar panels. I have nothing against renewable energy, however, I was interested when he said there were several other substations that could have been used, but it would have cost them more money. So, is it worth it to harm all of the people who live in that community and our property values? And a simple Zillow search around any of the areas that have a solar farm that you can do, if you do your own research, which I have, it prove, you can see for yourself that it does affect the property values of the homeowners. And so we're going to save Energy United some money from upgrading a substation so we can put it at this one because it's just easier for them, is not a valid excuse, in my opinion. During the election, I actually stood outside of the Farmington Baptist Church with you, Mr. Renninger, and had a conversation. And you said to me that night, for my vote, that you would protect the rights of the people in the Farmington area community, and I'm asking you to do that tonight.
My name's Andrew Backus. I'm Amy's husband. And I want to begin by saying that I commend the commissioners and the county leaders on the development of this comprehensive plan. We've been living here in the area for about five years. And prior to that, I was a career Army officer. And one of my last assignments as an Army officer, I worked at the Pentagon for the Assistant Secretary of the Army for installations. I reviewed dozens of strategic plans, installation plans, many of which were commensurate with the size of Moxville and Davie County. The Army has bases that big. So I have quite a bit of experience reviewing plans. And I, and I have to tell you that when I reviewed, when this matter came up and I reviewed your plan, I was, I was incredibly impressed. As Amy and others have said, the fact that you took the time to have four public meetings and six growth strategy meetings and comments from a blue ribbon panel and, and I, on the, on the acknowledgement page, I counted up forty-one names, including all of the commissioners here that were involved in this plan. And I just, you know, it was a really, it was a really good plan. And it made me feel good that here in Davie County, we have good government that puts together a plan with the effort that you did to guide decisions going forward. So as you considered this solar panel initiative, my first thought was, this is a no-brainer. The commissioners would certainly not allow a measure that doesn't comport with the, with the twenty-year plan that they just approved mere months ago. And I was surprised that it even made it out of the Planning and Zoning Commission as Amy described earlier. I mean, the, the lack of discussion at that forum was really surprising to me, given the amount of effort that you put into this. And then to go to a forum like that, that probably among the first, if not the very first decision that you, that you are faced with, didn't even have the benefit of some robust discussion at that time. So that was a little bit disappointing. But regardless of that, here we are. And as you said, and it occurs to me, that there are three possible outcomes of today's hearing. One is certainly, you could vote yes. And given the amount of effort put into this plan and given the ordinances described herein, I think that there's some risks that is carried with a yes vote today. And I'd urge you not to vote yes. You mentioned that we could defer the decision. And I would ask, for what purpose are we deferring the decision? Are we buying a month or two to reconsider some components of this plan? Is that what we're doing? This plan took two years to develop. It's, it is silent on the issue of solar energy. A plan is, I can tell you from my, my military experience, a plan is certainly something that frequently gets adjusted and, and there's no question that this will probably be adjusted at some point in time. But I would suggest to you that that, any adjustments to the plan should go through the same process that you so carefully executed when you developed this plan in the first place. And so, I'm going to suggest that the right outcome today is a, is a no vote. On page ninety-three of this plan, it describes an annual review process. And that would be coming up, if you followed the plan, in about December of this year. I would suggest that that annual review process could be synced with the people that put this plan together in the first place. Certainly take the developers' input because they've clearly taken some time and effort to put together some comprehensive information of their own. But make it a deliberate decision that is synced with the county's administrat, administrative processes, including the budget, and then deliberately decide how solar fits as a utility into this plan going forward. That would be good government. That would be a continuation of the good government that was so well-executed, in my opinion, when you put together this plan in the first place. So that's my advocacy. I, I advocate for a no vote this evening and remand this to the annual review process that is described in the plan that was adopted in December 2019. And I'll be glad to answer any questions and if there are none, thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions?
Any others that wish to come forward to comment?
I didn't sign up tonight, but I, I hope that's okay for me to come up and speak.
This is a public hearing, so yes, it is. You do not sign up for public hearings like you do for public comments.
Perfect. My name's Clayton Peel. I, I live just off Putting Ridge Road. One thing I was surprised I've not heard tonight about opposition for the solar farm is, the wildlife was spoken about a little bit, but they did not mention the birds. Birds is, well, a lot of birds, waterfowl, will see the solar farms and think of it as a lake or water and dive down to it. A lot of birds are killed as they're trying to go down to what they think is water. That's something that's kind of concerning to me. I saw a bald eagle about a year ago from my house. That's, that's a waterfowl. They, they go hunting in water. So, concerned about our national bird being at risk at local here in Davie County. But, another point I wanted to talk about, not so much about the farm. If, if the solar farm moves forward, I think we need to think about infrastructure. You can only access Putting Ridge Road with two roads, Farmington Road and Cana Road. And Cana Road is in horrible condition. I, I'm sure if any of, any of you drive down Cana Road, you recognize that. As they go to build a solar farm like this, there's got to have access, people coming in and out. And Putting Ridge Road is not in really good condition either. I think both those roads need some, some work, real serious work done on them, not just tar and gravel that has taken place the last several years. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward and make any comments?
Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to comment, I'd now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair, closing the public comments section. So you might close the public comments section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, appreciate all the input. So at this time, we will declare the public hearing closed and I will turn it over to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Meadwell, if he's still available. Andrew, I know some of the statements a while ago were concerned deciduous trees that the leaves fall off of year in the wintertime. If, if a solar farm is permitted, we have an ordinance or requirements for that solar farm, does that include evergreens planted around it or something that's not, where it's not visible in the wintertime?
Correct. The, I think you heard, Mr. Avan-
The, I think you heard, Mr. Avine, have to speak to that type B buffer. It's a 20-foot buffer that has to have that evergreen-type hedge tree-type planting requirement right there. So that would be in place. You know, always, we always encourage to try to take advantage of as much existing vegetation as possible, but by ordinance requirements, they have to provide that buffer.
And that's around the entire circumference?
That's correct, sir. Yes.
And we do have the ability to change and add those?
This process has a special conditions rezoning, not a special use permit, but a special conditions zoning. You do have that ability to add additional conditions to that.
Is this considered a rezoning of the property, or does it remain residential agricultural?
It would be a rezoning of the property, yes, sir.
So it's no longer, at that point, residential agricultural?
That's correct. The use could still be, for instance, if the facility reaches its end of life, the, as part of the requirements, the reclamation that the developers are required to do, they have to bring it back to that existing conditions. You know, the site could still be used for agricultural purposes, qualify for that agricultural-type use through the tax department. But the actual zoning itself would still be, if you approved tonight, the requested district. They would have to come back to this board through a process to revert it back to that RA zoning district. But the actual agricultural use could remain, in which we do now. I mean, we have agricultural uses on industrial zone properties now, so.
Does this, does this under use as a solar farm, does this still retain a farm use tax rate?
I would be afraid to answer that question, Richard. I don't know if Brian is still here or not, but.
Because it would be interesting to know what, how the tax rate would change.
And we could get that information for you.
It does come out of agricultural deferment. So we'll be paying a three-year rollback tax and then full tax levy for not going forward?
Yeah, we've, in the past ones, solar farms, we've had, we've talked about that. It would come out of deferment at that point.
And that three-year rollback, that's mandated by, that's state, that's statute. Question, Andrew, are there, have there been any recommendations or proposals by the neighbors, those that have maybe spoken here tonight, that have been rejected by the developer?
I'm not aware. I don't know what those conversations that have occurred. That would be between the applicant to state those, but I'm not aware of anything.
So, sir, if you could come up, we'll record these meetings, and you may be being picked up back there, you may not be. I'm not sure whether the mics are picking it up that far back or not.
Sir, I think that's a great question. I'd just like to point out to you that we're residents and we're not developers. And my point earlier about the use of the comprehensive plan is our opportunity as residents to consider alternatives. So I think it's a very good, very good question, and I would like to be able to participate in development of courses of action, evaluation of courses of action going forward as part of the comprehensive plan process. Question to me? No?
Andrew, one more question, if I might.
You may, one.
How does the process, if this solar farm is approved and eventually goes out of business 40 years, 50 years from now, and it's reclaimed back to farmland, does it automatically go back to residential agricultural?
No, sir. Yeah, once you change the zoning classification, they would have to follow a similar-type process to have it rezoned back to RA or, you know, R-20 or, you know, whatever the conditions may lend itself at that time.
At that time, yes.
What you're actually doing is rezoning from a residential agriculture quality design overlay district, which is there now, to a special purpose with special conditions district, this track. And also, once it's been rezoned, in order for it to go back, you'd have to have another application and another hearing and reasons for going back to the residential agricultural overlay.
I do have one more question, if you don't mind. Under the present zoning, if the Howells wanted to put a hog farm there, could they do that?
Yes.
As it is now? Chicken farm?
Chicken houses.
Chicken houses?
Yeah. And because the property is currently in that agricultural deferment, those type of agricultural uses are exempt from meeting any type of zoning requirement. So, you know, we couldn't request setbacks, things of that nature. So those are, those type uses are guaranteed by statute, that those are exempt from zoning regulation. In some instances, some building regulations do.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, at this time, would entertain a motion to approve, deny, or defer.
Mr. Chairman, I am prepared to make a motion to deny this request. I do not think the good outweighs the bad for this community.
Have a motion, or have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Okay. All right, open it up for discussion.
You know, I would just like to say that there's some information that we've asked that we hadn't received tonight that I'd still like to have some answers to. And, you know, I'll be honest, there's, the question truly is, what's the highest and best use of this property for the county? And how do we see that fit? And it also brings a question to me, is what precedence does this set for the property rights of landowners? So I think we have to ask ourselves all that question. And, you know, with some of these questions that I still have not being answered, I still need answers. That's all I'm gonna say.
The comprehensive land plan is silent on the point, and that's a problem. I readily concede that point. But I too share the issue of landowners' rights. You know, we've talked a lot about, the big challenge we're going to have in this county is rules is going to continue to meet urban, urban meet rule in this case. Not that solar farms is necessarily an urban issue, but land use is always going to be very, can be contentious. And I am concerned about landowners' rights and what they can do to value their property. But the comprehensive plan does not speak to this solar farm, and I think we need to look at it and take that into account going forward. And so I would be, I would too like to get some more information or integrate the plan, remand it back to staff.
And, Mr. Chair, you've got a motion to deny with nothing else to that. You might want to have each one of the members look at your packet page number 29 on Board Action 12, going down to Motion to Deny, which is your second box. And it needs to be consistent with applicable adopted plans. However, it does not promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, and does not consider the action to be reasonable in the public interest due to the, and then so forth. Whatever you want to put in that motion. But I think that motion needs to have more than just a motion to deny. So if you wish to amend your motion?
I will say that I'm making a motion to deny because I do not believe that it protects the historical character of the area. And all those other words, if it needs to be, Stacy.
Is it going to have a detrimental effect and so forth?
Yeah.
As you look on down your?
I think it will. That's my opinion, that it will have a detrimental effect on the area.
Well, I have voiced these concerns before about tying up acreage in the second smallest landmass county in the state and solar farms in terms of the best use of the acreage that we have in the county. Now, certainly, I am concerned about property rights. That's the fundamental right that this country was built on. But we have a responsibility to address the issues that are brought before us. And so I would say this, I think I respect Mr. Blakely and Mr. Renninger enough to have them, 30 days will not change my vote in regards to this. It just, it will not. But if Mr. Blakely and Mr. Renninger need questions answered, I am certainly willing to defer for 30 days. Is that where, I mean, is that, are you looking at? And I say that to say I would withdraw the second out of respect for these gentlemen. It will not change my vote. I voiced these concerns before, and I'm going to stand on those concerns. But I am willing to, out of respect for these two gentlemen, to get their questions answered. And.
Yeah, well, my broader point is, we've adopted, we've approved seven of these things since '17. A broader point to me is that we want any more in Davie County, period. You know, where it's on Pudding Ridge or it's in wherever. And I appreciate that, Mark. I don't know that we would have that question answered in 30 days. But that's my bigger point, is, you know, I would even, maybe we want to put a moratorium on it. But, you know, I am concerned that these things are coming faster than we're, I just don't want us to, we gave this a lot of thought, but the speed at which they're coming, it occurs to me that maybe we haven't thought of something. And so I would like to give some more time to consider the solar farm globally. And I mean, this one's obviously, the one's before us tonight, but globally, I'd like to think about the whole solar farm issue as it relates to Davie County. Because again, I understand green energy, I understand renewable energy, but I'm just not convinced that the constituents want any more of this in Davie County. Landowners' rights notwithstanding, so broader point.
And, Mr. Chair, if you, as the board, if it does decide to move forward with maybe even modifying your comprehensive land use plan or moratoriums or whatever, I need to say that with respect to this application, you have to go by what our law is currently, our ordinance is currently. And therefore, you could not change the ordinance and then come back and say, well, we're going to deny this because we changed the rules. But you do have a motion on the floor. It's not been seconded at this point in time, obviously, but that motion, I assume you have amended it to include the language set forth in packet page 29?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have to agree with everything that everybody has said here. I can't see those being wrong. However, there's been enough information presented here tonight that I have some things that I would like to check out as far as the area up there, to see who, whose claims are most valid. And I would like to see this tabled until another time, if we can do that.
Okay, you're gonna have to help me here, Mr. Vogler. We got a motion on the floor.
Got a motion, but no second because the second has been withdrawn. So if there's no second, that motion fails now, and then you could go back and do a motion to defer. Or Madam Finney could change her motion to defer, even.
If it's going to be the best thing for everybody else, I'll change it to defer for now.
So you've got a motion on the floor.
I'll second the deferment until we get more information so we can make the right decision. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to defer. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor of deferring this, raise your hand. Okay, thank you for the spirited dialogue. This is, like I say, an issue that the county will be seeking input from people in the county. Mr. Vogler, I understand your position, I appreciate you saying that, but, you know, we will take that into account, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just say this, too, in the broader sense. We're having this discussion because of mandates from the state and federal legislative bodies. If they did not mandate 10% on the energy companies, this probably wouldn't even be an issue. And what concerns me is, if those mandates are pulled back, in other words, that green, that green mandate or green energy, those green energy rollback dollars go away, these solar farms are going to go away, and somebody's going to have to pay to clean them up. And if the companies go away, I'm not sure any mandates we have in place are going to remedy the mess we're going to have to clean up. So that's just a broader question, and, but I don't think, and I think clearly, the gentleman from Energy United indicated, they're only at 12%, they're at 12%. That's great. But I don't think they are indicating that their return on investment is pushing them to go above that 12% or even really be at that 12% if the federal and state governments were not requiring them to do it. So that's my concern here. I'm concerned about, certainly about property rights, but I'm more concerned about the potential of the taxpayers having to have massive cleanups if these dollars dry up.
And, Mr. Chair, there was a lot of discussion during the motion with regards to possibility of looking at solar farm facilities in the future. So you might want to discuss further tonight whether or not you, as a board, wish to direct staff to look further at that, maybe in December, as part of the review of the comprehensive plan itself.
Well, I do think, when I say ask staff to revisit it, I think that would be part of it, ask staff for a recommendation about, again, the global issue of solar farms in Davie County. Is it something we want to seek? Or are we saying that we don't want them in Davie County anymore because of the negative issues that they may create, either real or perceived? So I would ask Mr. Meadwell, I don't know where he went, but I would ask his, as part of the record, for him to look into that and make a recommendation, which that recommendation may include a moratorium.
I think he is in the county commissioner's waiting room, maybe. And Mr. Ellers is probably texting him, as you say.
I have, yeah. He'll be here.
Hey, Mr. Meadwell, as part of the discussion, you know, we would ask you to look at, make a recommendation to this board about solar farms in general in Davie County. Is that something that you would recommend that we consider in the future? Or should we just, given the perhaps negative connotation that goes with them, what the public interest being negatively served, what would be your? negatively served, what would be your recommendation? And would that go as far as to maybe consider a moratorium? And also, how would it, could we integrate that with the comprehensive plan as for the annual update?
And I guess, do you just want a yes or no answer? That'd be the easiest thing, right?
Sure, please. Thanks for asking.
I think that, just the nature of this particular use, the issues that we continue to have, it seems to be the same questions each time. You know, the board, you know, I thought we, as a county, addressed this particular use, as well as some other uses, too, under this current process. But it still just does not seem to be working at its best, if that's, so I would say, it's some type of measure. I don't know if a moratorium is the method to go. I think it's something that should possibly be explored. I think, you know, a moratorium would not address this current application. But it would necessarily address anything that would be submitted after the fact. With that being said, you know, somebody could come in tomorrow, make application for a facility. A moratorium adopted in October or November would not address that application either. So.
Moratorium cannot be in, a moratorium can't be instituted indefinitely, can it?
No, there's a set timeframe with that.
In the back of my mind, is there not something, some provision that we're, that is required for a moratorium to be adopted that has to be a public hearing?
You do. They do.
Yes. It would have to be.
You got this ready for October?
Published for next month, maybe.
Somebody could come in tomorrow, they would still fall within that.
Right.
Do you have any in the pipeline?
None that have applied.
No one has applied.
This is the only current application. We continue to hear there's others that are being discussed.
And if any solar farm came to your office, it would still come before this board?
That is correct. It would follow the same process.
Okay. Well, if you could do some research on that and maybe report back, I would think that would.
October, your October meeting?
Yes.
And if you wanted to adopt a moratorium, you would need to know ahead of time, so he can do the public notice.
Yes, sir.
Paper.
Yes, sir.
For a public hearing. So Andrew would need to, and Mr. Meadwell would need to know that in advance.
All right. Can I ask you one quick, one more quick question? Can we look at what other, and I'm sure you'll do this, what other counties are doing on this issue? I mean, it just seems like, as Mr. Renninger said, we're now dealing with these, one, in my perception, one right after the other. And if that's happening in a hundred counties in North Carolina, so be it. But if it's not, I'd like to know kind of what is going on.
I don't think that we're unique, in the sense that we're having multiple requests for these type facilities. Other jurisdictions are facing the same issues that you face.
I know our neighboring county, Rowan, had a moratorium, and they're taking it up at October meeting to relax that, or what they're going to do. So I know we're not the only one dealing with it, to the point, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can be clear regarding what staff need to be working on between now and October and now in December, we're to bring recommendations back to you in October as just some guiding principles to consider. Looking forward to the December annual update of the comprehensive plan. So it's kind of a two-step process, is that correct? Okay.
I would like to see some options, too, in that, what we can do and how we can handle these things.
And to be clear for Madam Clerk, the motion to defer, was that just for one month? Or was it in any set time period, or what?
There was no time certain on the deferment.
Okay.
It's open-ended.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on the public hearing that we've closed and discussed on the Perrondale Solar, or solar farms in general? Okay. Thank you. All right. Andrew, don't go away. You're up. We have a presentation on North Carolina General Statute 160D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the next couple of months, you will be presented with a text amendment that was created as a result of session law 2019 from the General Assembly. And this has been a encompassing work that has taken approximately almost six years to do. It was originated with the North Carolina Bar Association, as well as with the School of Government. But what this new legislation, it creates a new section in statute called 160D. 160D replaces the planning and zoning enabling legislation that counties have, which is 153A, and municipalities, which is 160A, and combines it to one group of legislation that both counties and cities have to follow, which is called 160D. So, our hopes are that we will have this for your review in November, with the latest of December adoption. This is to go into effect January 1 of 2021. However, because the law goes into effect in January, municipalities and counties still have till July of '22 to actually get the ordinances and change and things of that nature. We're not going to wait around to do that. We're going to go ahead and have it submitted as a text amendment for your approval. These are technical changes in nature, nothing of a real substantive changes in measures or things like that. It just really combines that, where it makes an equal playing field, that what you have in cities also applies to in a county as well. So, there's about sixty-five changes that are outlined in the legislation. Not all will apply to Davie County, but some do. We're actually presenting to the Bermuda Run Planning Board next week on these changes for their adoption. Town of Moxville is doing their own thing. Their town attorney is doing their amendments for them. But the one thing that we will be doing is the School of Government, the School of Government is offering a review of the actual text amendment that we'll be providing to you, just to look at its compliance with the legislation. So that is something that just came out last week with that. So we think it's probably well worth to do that. So, but that's on your future radar coming up. So, but we're hoping to get this to the Planning Board in September for their first initial review, adoption by or recommendation to them in October, and to you in November. So, but I guess it's one of these things, and Ed can kind of pipe into it if he needs to. But, you know, these are, regardless, if we don't do anything, it's going to become law. So, we have to do it, basically. So, but really, no, it's just really just technical changes in terms of definitions, and rules of procedures, and things of that nature.
And it's combining those two chapters into one, plus adding additional things from other chapters of a sentence here, or paragraph there, whatever, into one chapter, so that everything can be in one place. And it's been big enough over the past six years, as to say, the State Bar, through their real estate division, has been working on this and helping draft the legislation. The School of Government's been drafting legislation. David Lawrence, who is the guru down at the School of Government on land use, and his book, North Carolina Land Use, has been the Bible for decades, as far as the courts look at. Has actually not only updated that, but within written another book, just on this chapter, 160D. So, it's been a big deal. And it's taken a lot of work on everybody, and Andrew in particular, and his staff has done a remarkable job up to this point in time on it, and have worked long and hard hours on this.
We've talked about, as we're doing some planning, to look at a UDO. Is 160D, would that have any impact on that?
Regardless, if you were doing a UDO, or, you know, if we updated the comprehensive plan, this 160D becomes state law, we have to do it.
Mr. Chairman, this, these acronyms we throw around sometimes, so we didn't want you to hear 160D and not know what we're talking about. This is something the General Assembly handed us. Mr. Vogler, Mr. Meadwell, and his staff have been working on. So that'll have to be done between now and the new calendar year. So we just wanted to give you a heads up. There is an attached memo in your agenda packet, as well as a couple PowerPoint slides, just to prep you for that conversation.
Any questions for Mr. Meadwell?
Good reads.
Yeah, thank you. All right. We now move to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or issues about that? Questions?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll raise your hand. That is approved. Next, we move to the county manager's report. Mr. Eller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick, because I know we've had an important extended meeting tonight, based on all the comments. So, a couple of quick things. I know that we've received several emails regarding an item the Board of Adjustment will be taking up soon. I just want to be clear that we've been telling citizens that one of the upcoming hearings on September 15th at the Brock at 6:00 PM is for the Board of Adjustment to hear, not the Board of County Commissioners. So just want to be clear on that. We'll continue to let citizens know who email or call us about that. Also want to let you know that our sales tax continues to come in, in a better-than-anticipated fashion. Ms. West has prepared a few updates for me, and I'll be sending that out to you very soon in my next update. I know I gave you a quick update at the last meeting, but wanted to set the stage for that in the future, because I know some things are dependent upon that. We do want to wait to our September estimates come in, just to be safe. We don't want to make any rash or quick decisions until we know that we feel good about that. So let's wait a couple more weeks, and hopefully, we can breathe a sigh of relief that it's performing much better than we had originally anticipated going into the COVID-19 epidemic. I want to give a few thank yous tonight. One is to the Board of Elections. They have a lot that they've been prepping for. We've got our One Stop Early Voting Site, opening it up on the 15th of October through the 31st of October. That'll be at three locations, at the Brock, Cornerstone Christian Church, and Jerusalem Fire Department. And then on November 3rd, as you know, voters will go to their assigned voting place. For anybody who has questions about One Stop Voting, or any questions at all, they can call our Board of Elections staff, who will be glad to assist them. Also want to thank Mr. Lambert for all the hard work he's done for the Northeast Davie Sewer Project. His leadership is noticeable. I'm very proud of him. I'm also very proud of the presentation that was presented to all of you tonight in a joint meeting with the Town of Moxville. I know sometimes, we do a lot of work behind the scenes, and present a lot of different things to this body. But I will tell you, those two projects combined will set the stage for this county for years to come, that our grandchildren and great-grandchildren will benefit from what we're doing today. We don't want to be like some municipalities and counties across the state and country, where they run out of water and sewer capacity. That is a bad place to be. We can say that we will not be there. And I'm very proud of our staff, and Mr. Lambert, his team, and this board, and our partners at the Town of Moxville, and our partners at Bermuda Run for helping us make those things happen, and the continued partnership that we have with our municipalities. So, thank you for your support, Mr. Lambert. Thanks for your leadership. Wouldn't ever have happened without you. Wouldn't trade you for ten utility directors across the state of North Carolina, and I mean that. Also appreciate Mr. Burden, his hard work for our emergency operation plan update. That comes after our regional mitigation plan updates with all of our towns, and consultation with our community partners, and our department directors as well. So, all that is done, and he's put a ton of work into that. And I'm very proud of our emergency services team, that they continue to provide leadership to us all. All of his team is just a great team to work with. And then, the last shout out I'll give is to our census. We are the fourth county in North Carolina with the highest participation rate, and the first county in the Piedmont Tribe regional area for census participation. So our efforts, multiple staff have helped us with this. They need to be commended for that work. That is a big deal for all of our block grants that we'll receive funding for, from our fire departments, to our schools, to our nonprofits, to our government programs. It's, that's a big deal. I want to thank Paris Whitley, Kim Harris, Coolome Fire Department, and the Town of Coolome for helping us with our Coolome caravan that happened. We were put in the North Carolina newsletter that was just released. So, very proud of them for that work as well. Mentioned our town partners. We continue to work with them on Republic Services and a Plan for Recycling Sustainability that we'll hope to educate all of you on between now and October. We continue to work on our fire report with our fire departments in preparation for our upcoming special call meeting, and working with Mr. Boast and our emergency services team for that. So more to come on that. And then, just need to note this, because I think we're hearing about this in the news, but I want to make sure it's out there. We're not immune from the supply chain issues that we're facing because of COVID still. There are certain supplies, not just health-related, but in general, from building costs that have increased, to PPE and supplies that need to be ordered, to parts for our vehicles. All those things continue to be impacted. And I will commend our staff for doing the best they can to get ahead of all those things. But every government's talking about this right now, and trying to anticipate the unanticipated, which is really, really difficult for us. But we continue to push forward in the midst of all that. I'm just very proud to be part of Davie County, and very proud of our staff and our team. And I'm very proud of this board. So, thank you for your support. And I'll conclude with that, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would want to be amiss if I did not follow up on one thing that Mr. Eller indicated to you first thing, with regards to the Board of Adjustment hearing that's coming up on recall management. I do not say this to you as a board, so much as a board, as I say it, as the county attorney for the county Board of Commissioners. And also, the general public can hear this tonight. I know that each one of you have received multiple emails that have come in. A lot of pressure has been placed on you, as individual board members, to contact the Board of Adjustment, and to let them know your feelings on this. And I will let you know, actually letting the public tonight know, for the purposes of where you stand individually, that the Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial body which sits as judges. It is improper, and I would tell this to the public, that it's improper for any county commissioner to contact a judge ex parte in any proceeding, whether it be over in the court system, or whether it be before the Board of Adjustment. And for them to try to put pressure, anyone to try to put pressure on you to that is not appropriate. And you should not, and I recommend, and I recommend, but I advise you that it is illegal to do that. And hopefully, that'll take a little bit of pressure off the five of you, as far as what the public may expect of you as board members to do before the Board of Adjustment. But they do sit as quasi-judicial, so this board and on as judges, they're not supposed to have ex parte communications with anyone outside of any hearings that they conduct as a group.
Okay. Thank you. We definitely don't want to call her outside the lines, so appreciate that. I just had a question. Mr. Eller, could you remind us again, the meeting with Mr. Boast and the fire departments is the 16th?
It is. That's the date that we finally align the stars, and all the schedules seem to be working out there. So, we will get a formal notice out to this board. I do have some things to firm up tomorrow, Mr. Boast, to make sure that availability and everything's taken care of. But yes, we'll have a notice out to you very soon. But that's our tentative date. I don't see that changing. But the 16th is what we're scheduling for, an all-day special call meeting with this.
Thank you. All right. Any old business that come before us this evening? Seeing none, any new business? Seeing none, any new business? All right. We'll move to Commissioner's comments. Start with Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everybody being here. I would just say this. You know, sometimes, I think the Bible speaks of gold being refined by fire. Well, sometimes we just have to have the level of discussion, and sometimes it seems like we're on fire, but, you know, that level of discussion back and forth on different issues, I think brings refinement to the process and refinement to the final product that we produce. And I would just say this, please, you know, this, we live, God has blessed us with living in, in my opinion, there's nowhere else I want to go, guys. I love this county, but our nation needs healing. Our nation needs physical healing. We need spiritual healing. And so, you know, I just ask that we all continue to pray for our country. We're going through an election, and on November 4th, somebody's not going to be happy. Pray that God will intervene and bring peace to our land. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Finney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will touch on Mark's praise for our county as well, because I love Davie County. I agree, there's no better place to live. Just, my car broke down last week, and this is such a great place to live, that in my rearview mirror was a retired Sheriff Steffedy who helped me push my car, and when I called the wrecker service, they knew who it was before they picked up the phone. That's Davie County, and that's why I love it. But I want to thank all of you who came out tonight to speak your mind and share your passion and your feelings about the Puddinridge Solar Farm area. It's very important to me that our citizens participate in all that we do. I'm so glad that you all came, that you remained for the rest of the meeting, so that you could see how we operate, and thank you so much for reaching out to all of us and contacting us. Johnny Lambert, you've had a busy day. Thank you so much for all that you do for this county, and how far you're taking us. We really appreciate it very much. It's just really good to cut that ribbon today. Since Cameron snuck in, I'll brag on him a little bit. Fire Marshal Cameron Webb, thank you for all the work that you're doing and the bridges that you're building. I appreciate you very much, sir. You know that. I want to share a short little story, but I know we're really late, but I have two neighbors who, in my opinion, have done a very remarkable citizen-led event this week. Two young people in Advance, Alex Stockton and Jessica Moore, decided that Advance should have their American flags flying again. So they went to the VFW, and they found that the flags were in ill-repair, and they went out in the community, and they asked people to help them purchase new flags. And we have beautiful American flags lining the streets of Advance, downtown Advance, ain't that right, Richard? And I just think it's wonderful that those two young people decided that that needed to be done, especially in this time, and with everything that's going on in our country. And I just wanted to give them a public shout-out, because I appreciate that that was on their heart last week, and that's what they decided to do. So, thank you.
All right. Mr. Poindexter?
I'd also like to extend my thanks to Johnny Lambert for all the hard work he's done over the last few years since he assumed that position. I'd like to give a shout-out too, to Stacy Karnatzner and John Ferguson. Without those two people and their hard work and their willingness to work for the community, the Eastern Davie Sewer Project would not have happened, could not have happened as it did. Just like to especially thank those two for that. And I'd like to thank the folks that came out tonight to express your opinions. You presented stuff to us that a lot of times we don't think about until somebody actually says it. I'd like to thank those that called too, a lot of whom are not here tonight. But they called and gave their opinions as well, some of them positive, some of them negative. Also, I'd like to take opportunity to thank staff. They work so hard to get this done so that we can make the decisions that we make and get us the information that we need. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Mr. Blakely?
Hopefully no one thought I was thinking bad of them. I've been making weird faces because my knee's killing me, but anyway, I appreciate all the staff and what they do each and every day. Again, it's easy for people to look up here and see us and think that we can just kind of control everything, and we have to make tough decisions, so we appreciate what you guys do for us and helping us that. Johnny, salute for everything you got going on, man. Couldn't live without you. I appreciate that. Cameron, looking forward to next week and bridging these gaps that we need to bridge with the local departments and finding solutions. So I'm eager to see you step up and help us bridge those gaps. And then for everyone else here, I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. A lot of the things brought to us tonight were things that, again, I would have never thought of until they were brought to our attention. So it's mindful to have those things brought to our attention, and again, for us to make the right decision and figure out what is best for us and the county going forward. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate all the comments tonight, and I appreciate the people getting involved with the government and the process. You know, we don't typically see that type of engagement, good or bad, but I think it's good that you folks are engaged. Appreciate you staying to the end. It's already been mentioned today, we had the ribbon cutting for the Eastern Davie Sewer, and Mr. Eller alluded to this. That will solve the issue for that end of the county for 100 years, so it's not going to matter for the rest of us in here. So we're good up there. And then the, very excited about the joint meeting we have with Moxville today. Looking forward to solving that problem for the rest of the county, and just really in a good place, I think, working with Moxville, and I'm very appreciative of that. And with that, we're getting long in the tooth. I appreciate everyone staying, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, we are adjourned. Thank you.